A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Commissioners meeting from May 6th of 2020. Just reminding everybody this meeting is public and it's being recorded via audio and visual. And if you do come to speak to us at the microphone, make sure you tell us who you are and where you're from. And if you speak on the phone, same rules apply. Let us know who you are and your address, please, because I know there's some people might be dialing in for this as we do have some hearings today. Any awards, recognitions, or correspondence?
I have none.
Nope. Okay. I have none either.
You know, I think we ought to continue to appreciate everybody who's doing what they're doing, but particularly the ones that we keep rerouting and finding new projects for, like our maintenance staff.
Our maintenance guys are really going above and beyond.
Now that they're opening up the Schaefer Memorial Call Center.
Yeah. EOC.
Somebody thinking overtime.
Okay. So acknowledgement of the previous minutes. We have February 7th, 11th, April 15th, and 29th there.
Mr. Chair, move acknowledgement of the minutes of February 7th, February 11th, April 15, and April 29.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Any additions to the agenda? Okay. Any public input, recognition from visitors that are not, on issues that are not on the schedule or the agenda? I'll unmute the mics right now in case anybody does. Okay. Everybody's unmuted right now. Does anybody have anything to bring before the board that is not on the agenda? Number one, legalization of Butler Grade Road.
Are you calling for a legalization of Butler Grade Road?
Yeah, this will be a, we'll go ahead and...
That's Bill's turn.
We'll go into a public hearing mode for legalization of Butler Grade Road.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Kenny, Yumitilla County Public Works Survey Supervisor. So first item today is Butler Grade Road legalization. We've prepared a report to kind of go over some of the facts here. And if we could go ahead and scroll to page four, I believe it is, I have an exhibit. We'll just kind of leave it here while I go through the report. And feel free to interrupt me at any time if you guys have any questions. So construction and upgrades to the existing windmill facilities near the summit of Butler Grade created the need to locate the right-of-way extensive Butler Grade Road. Upon investigation, we found that the right-of-way location did not conform to the as-traveled location of the road. It was determined that legalization was necessary in order to define the right-of-way in preparation for future alignment alterations due to windmill upgrades. We had determined the existing records of a portion of Butler Grade did not agree with the location of the road as traveled and used for 10 or more years. The Board issued an order October 2nd, 2019, for the survey to be completed. It was then done by Brian Reeves of DK Engineering, who is a subcontractor to the windmill facilities, and that was done in October of 2019. The Public Works Department intends to legalize that portion of Butler Grade as shown in the survey, 1999(c). Butler Grade originates from Old Road 112. As you can see there on the map, the highlighted in blue is the approximate location of Old Road 112. It was petitioned for in May of 1881. Notice was posted that same month. The report of Board viewers, survey field notes were all completed in August of 1881. In that documentation, the road was found to be too steep and a recommendation was made to move the route easterly as a better and shorter route can be obtained. I believe that's kind of what happened here is, as you can see there, that was their easterly relocation, and I'm not entirely confident that that ever actually happened. We looked at some old 1950 aerials and the road has been where it is now for quite some time, even in the 50s, so just further evidence it's been there for some time. In 2004, a bridge replacement project near the intersection of Van Sickle and Butler Grade Road discovered the need for legalization to ensure that people could construct the right-of-way.
You haven't been muted. To unmute yourself, press the star key twice.
As a result, Butler Grade Road was legalized from the intersection northeasterly to the quarter-corner of Section 9. It's about six tenths of a mile in length, and that's what you see there at the bottom. So that was legalized in 2004. Currently, the road is regularly maintained, gravel road, and outside Highway 11 and other minor routes. This serves as one of the only major connections between Milton-Freewater and Walla Walla and north-central Yumitilla County. Experiences a wide variety of traffic by general public, farming operations, windmill facilities, and communications companies among others. Early November 2019 traffic study shows around 75 vehicles a day. There were a few impacts to property owners on this project, mostly on the north side, on the downhill side, on the Milton side. There are a few structures located within the proposed right-of-way, and they're shown on Pages 4 and details B and C of the survey that was completed, and they're further detailed on Page 4 of this report. The structures are permanent, wellhouses in a scale, they'd be impractical to move and extremely expensive to relocate. We proposed an encroachment license, which we have issued to those folks, we just have not received it yet. Conversation with them indicated that they are in approval of it, they just haven't gotten out to give it back to us. So if you want to go ahead and scroll down to the next few pages, the encroachments shown in details. At the bottom of that page, it's a little bit more blown up, just a little further down, yep. And so there on the right side of the page, you can see the major encroachments, that concrete block building, that's a, there's wellheads in there, it's a wellhouse, and so, you know, it's a, it's pretty substantial. The other structures are just outside, or right on the right-of-way, so they're not as much of a concern. So we're hoping to get that license taken care of for that. At this point in time, the Public Works Department recommends that the road be legalized as proposed in the survey and description in the order. You guys have any questions for me?
The section we're talking about is this lower end of the diagram on the topographical map?
It's shown in red, so it'd be about six miles in length, and it's the, it's the red portion.
Doesn't that extend into Walla Walla County?
It ends at the state line.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So we're not in Walla Walla County?
Right. Yeah.
In the blue line, you said that was like 1881?
1881, Old Road 112.
Do you remember that road, Bill?
Yeah, I kind of remember crossing that before.
Yeah, and I found it interesting that those old notes said that they moved it easterly because the grade was too steep, but that was, so I assume that's what happened there, but I, like I said, I really doubt it was ever constructed like that. Quite a few ravines between...
The blue section?
Right.
It looks like they've been farming it for quite a while, so...
So this would just preserve the, it would virtually wrap the right-of-way on the existing as-built location of the road.
Weren't we having trouble a couple of years ago with trucks detouring off the main route and coming up Butler Grade?
Yeah, and we did a little bit of a traffic revision on a portion, portions north and south of the grade to help remedy that.
So that upper red portion follows state line?
Yeah, that's actually a portion of what's considered state line road, but it's all 717, it's, Butler Grade Road is number 717, and it's all part of that county road system.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I'm going to open it up to the public for comments, I'm going to unmute some microphones here just for a second in case anybody's got public comment. Going to open it up for anybody in favor of this. Hearing none. Anybody opposed to legalization? Okay. Hearing none. I'm going to mute the mics again. Okay. So at this time, I guess we can come out of public hearing mode and deliberate.
Mr. Chair, move adoption of order RD 2020-08.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, I think we have another legalization. Let's see. Livestock Road. Go ahead, Matt.
Okay. So, yeah, this is a revisit of the Livestock Road legalization. We find that a portion of Northwest Livestock Road has no records, and the road's been there and existed for 10 or more years. We held a hearing February 19th for this legalization. The hearing was continued to determine impacts to neighboring property owners. This legalization will not impact the ability of the property owner to obtain access to the road, and we continue to recommend that this Board, or the Board, legalize this section of Livestock Road. I'd be happy to go into the report a little bit more if you guys need to.
Let me stop you for a second, I want to make sure that we're in public hearing mode again back into that. So, I was like, I don't think we actually went back into public hearing mode. So we are in public hearing mode for the legalization of Livestock Road, so sorry about that. Go ahead.
Yeah, so at this point, we're just, the Public Works Department has no further comment in relation to the portion that we're asking to be legalized, but we'd be interested to hear any questions and comments from the public related to the matter.
Okay, I'm going to unmute the microphones, see if anybody's got any questions. Okay, the microphones are unmuted now. Does anybody have any questions regarding legalization of Livestock Road? I think I heard background noise, I don't think somebody was actually addressing us. Any comments for, in favor of legalization of Livestock Road? You are unmuted at this time. Hearing none. Anybody want to speak against the legalization of Livestock Road? And again, you are unmuted. Okay. Hearing none. Let's go to the Commissioners.
Matt, on page three of the document shows the roads. Looks like there are two roads that run almost side by side. Which one are we talking about here?
This is the sheet you're looking at?
Yes. It's more of a close-up, shows, you can see the road there.
There's one more down, isn't there?
Right there. See, it looks like two roads. Is one of those, are we picking one?
Oh, I see. Yeah, so that, in that, at that timeframe, which was a 1970 aerial photo, there just happened to be, at that time, it looks like there was two locations, however, that's not the case now. I couldn't tell you why that was, but the one to the northeast more closely conforms to what we're looking to legalize today.
The one at the point of the arrow.
The other one.
The further, further to...
The one, further one northeast. Yep.
Okay. Looks like maybe somebody was just using a shortcut.
Yeah, it's possible. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think the, you know, this, this road originally was petitioned to go north-south along the section line as shown there in orange. Well, when we were looking at the deed records in this area, it was clear that the canal came about the same time, if not slightly before the road, and so I think what happened was they never did construct that portion across the canal, it would have been two additional bridges and quite a bit more cost to the project to do that, so I think they just determined to make a decision at that time and reroute it northwest around the road, which is now what's part of Westland Road, so...
And the northeast section there is pretty well improved now?
Yes, it's gravelled, there's a portion of it that's paved, they've done some partitioning in there, and once you get to the entrance of the Modella's Trucking Complex, it's pretty substantial, and then Amazon did quite an improvement there for that bridge that crosses the canal into their facility, so... Again, this kind of pairs, just a little history, it kind of pairs into the idea that we're hoping to realign the current intersection of Livestock and Westland, move it north to this location, its intended location, to satisfy those ODOT setbacks. It'll be, it'll be a safer situation for everybody and a better alignment.
Okay. Any other questions?
I would, I guess I will add, I did, I prepared a few additional exhibits that showed ownerships in relation, in access. I know that was one of the original questions we had from one of the public, and it shows, I believe it was someone from the JTJ Enterprises who had some concerns, but I just, that shows their property frontage along the road, as well as other frontage down along the portion of Livestock that runs east-west down to the south side. It's just showing that nothing is really changing at this point, and it's, we're just keeping things consistent with the way they have been. It's another situation of wrapping the right-of-way around the physical road that's been there for quite some time, and they still have quite a lot of frontage in multiple locations if access is needed.
Okay. Is that all you had for us?
That's all I have for now, yeah.
Any questions?
No.
No. Okay. Hearing none, we're going to come out of public hearing mode and go back into deliberation mode with regular meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of BCC Order Number RD 2020-04.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. So now we're going to go back into public hearing mode. This one, this time it's for Yumitilla Fire District 1 annexation. Doug?
Okay. The county received a petition from property owners in the Salmon Point and Hat Rock areas wishing to remove their property from the Yumitilla Rural Fire Protection District and annex it to the Yumitilla County Fire District Number 1. There were sufficient signatures on the petition that it does meet any requirements, that an election will not be necessary if you want to move forward with the annexation. This is a public hearing scheduled for that petition.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and unmute the microphones of our participants.
And both districts were in agreement with the annexation. Both the Yumitilla County Fire District Number 1 and the Yumitilla Rural Fire Protection District submitted letters of support.
Okay. Okay. Members of the public, anybody wanting to speak for this annexation?
Good morning. Hi, Wood. My name is Gordon Graham, I'm a resident of the Hat Rock community. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I was one of the initial organizers of this petition effort. As a matter of fact, if you, if you have a copy of that petition, that's my name, my signature on the front of it. We definitely have gathered enough signatures and seen enough expression of support both from Hat Rock and Salmon Point to put this in front of you and ask for your approval so that we can change from District 1 to, or District 5 to District 1, so that's what we are seeking today.
Great. Okay. Thank you for your comments, appreciate that. Anybody else want to speak in favor of annexation?
I can confirm that his name is there.
Yeah, I saw it up on the screen, too, so, and I'm familiar with that name, not this Gordon Graham, but a different Gordon Graham. So, okay. So anybody else wanting to speak in favor of the annexation? Hearing none. Anybody wanting to speak in opposition of annexation? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and mute the mics again and ask the Commissioners if they have any questions.
I believe service to this Hat Rock...
You haven't been muted. To unmute yourself, press the star key twice. Mute off.
It's happened more than twice.
I got a little mute happy there.
She likes, she likes to talk, doesn't she? I believe service to Hat Rock would be provided at the diagonal road station of the Yumitilla Fire District 1, which, location of which is really pretty close, I think, to Hat Rock. I think it's a closer service than the, than Yumitilla is, which probably makes it very attractive to those who live there. That's my only comment.
Okay. And if this happens today, just out of curiosity, does that take effect? Because you said a vote's not required, because there's, so when would this take effect?
It's too late in this year to be effective, so it will take effect next tax year, so 2021. Well, July of next year, it will be actually changed.
Okay, because there's two people behind you who'd be very interested in to when that date is going to be, so...
Right, but it is, we are past March 31st to allow any changes for the 2021 tax year.
So July of '21, then?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
That would be the first that there would be tax support for it, or that it would actually be in effect as far as service?
It will be in effect now, but it...
For service?
For service, but the actual taxes won't go along with it until next tax year.
So they're providing the service now?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair, I move adoption of order BCC...
Actually, we're going to come out of public hearing mode first.
Thought we were, sorry about that.
Okay. Anything else, Doug?
No, not...
Okay, let's go out of public hearing mode and into deliberation and back to the regular meeting.
Now my motion to adopt order BCC 2020-032.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Thank you very much. And Mr. Graham, thank you for your comments, appreciate that. Okay, back to the agenda, Central Pipeline Project.
Okay. As the Board may recall, last summer, you entered into an option agreement with the Northeast Oregon Water Association for the purchase of pipeline capacity. For sake of convenience, we call it the Central Pipeline Project, that's the historic name for it. There were several conditions on the actual purchase, those have now been met, so it is before the Board for approval to complete the purchase. The present owner of the pipeline is Topaz Land Company, and they have reviewed all of the documents, and so has the county, so at this point, the county's ready to proceed with the actual purchase of the pipeline capacity.
We've had discussions of this at previous meetings and allocated funding for it, available for it. Certainly, it's an integral and important part of economic growth on the west end of Yumitilla County. I would approve, I would move to approve purchase of the Central Pipeline Project, including payments of funds to Morrow County Community Development. Authorize the Chair to sign any document necessary to complete the purchase from Topaz Land Company.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Road Department, payment, Lane County. Tom, are you on the phone?
Good morning.
There he is.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. Tom Dolls, Yumitilla County Public Works Director.
Good morning.
So what this is, is during the previous floods that we had in February, we did lose a bridge on one of our county roads up the south toward the Walla Walla River. It happens to be the one that connects Harris Park to the rest of the county, and Lane County had a temporary bridge that they allowed us to use as long as we need it, and it's actually up there in place. They transported the bridge from Lane County to Yumitilla County for us, and this is simply the cost of them transporting that bridge up so that we could install it.
I move approval. Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. There's a little confusion, because I think my colleague has a, an old agenda.
Apparently.
So, you know, if you look at the screen, you know, I'm up to date, see, so... Number six, Road Department, payment for TDX Power Services.
Okay, TDX Power Services were the contractor that was doing the Milton-Freewater levy work over there after the flood. Yumitilla County experienced some damage to the bridge on Cowes Creek Road that crosses the Walla Walla River. TDX's work was right there in the vicinity, so we simply had them do the repairs, which was amounted to some riprap placement around the, one of the fence on the center of the bridge in the middle of the river. It made, just made good sense to have them do it while they were right there, and that way the project was completed, and they finally got around to send us this bill for $15,024.71. We're simply requesting approval for payment of that bill.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of payment to TDX Powers Services in the amount of $15,024.71.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number seven, excavator purchase.
So Commissioners, we, during the flood event, we actually rented a number of excavators from various companies. Modern machinery came to us just recently with the proposition to purchase that, one of the excavators we had rented from them. This still qualifies for source well pricing and source well contract. It, they are offering to sell us the excavator and give us credit for 100% of the rent that we have into that at the time, or currently, which is $16,200. They're also giving us a credit for some of the previous rent on that machine because it had been rented, and that would be an additional $5,600. When you add that to the fact that the source well discount is 42% less the total cost of the, of the machine, we would be purchasing that machine at a cost of $161,501.24. I think this is, nobody else has come forward and offered us any kind of a deal like this. We do have an excavator on our replacement list, it's been there for a couple of years, and I think that this is probably as good an opportunity as we've seen to date to replace one of our older machines.
Do you think any of this might ultimately be eligible for reimbursement?
The, what's going to be eligible for reimbursement is the hourly rate that we've been charging against that machine on any of the, on any of the projects, so we do have an hourly rental charge on that machine, and so we will be reimbursed for the qualifying hours during the flood work.
Tom, was this on your list of anticipated equipment purchases for the year?
Yes, it was. It's been, it's been on our list for a couple of years, Commissioner.
And if I understand it correctly, then we're getting a $243,000 machine for $161,000?
Uh, yes. Well, actually, the machine is, that's the $243,000, and then you have to add in the, those other things down there, so...
Yeah, they're $41,000.
Yeah, actually, it's, oh, I don't have those numbers right in front of me. I'm sorry, I didn't anticipate that question, but they're, the freight, the thumb, the blade, all of those things are in addition to the $243,000.
It's about 41 and a half.
$41,497, so it'd be $284,000 and change for the $161,000.
So you're pretty satisfied, it's a pretty good buy.
I am convinced that modern machinery has stepped up and given us a very good deal.
Chair, I move approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Appreciate it. Election equipment purchase, Mr. Lanai.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Lanai with Yumitilla County's Administrative Services. Before you, we have a request to purchase a Agilis Duo scanner sorter for the election Before you, we have a request to purchase a Agilis Duo scanner sorter for the election department. So part of the, the reasoning behind this is this device allows us to increase our productivity, so we're handling the envelopes less, doing some of the work there, so there's less times that we need people to handle the envelopes. And also, at the same time, when we're talking are in the middle of COVID and different items like that, we want to reduce the amount of time that we touch items that have been touched by other people, too. The, what the device does is basically when the ballots come in, you dump them into the device, and then it scans them, sorts them, and puts all the signatures up. So then the person sitting at their desk then goes ahead and verifies those signatures. Right now, we gotta go through them by hand, count them, put them in a batch, and take them back to your desk, scan those. And then they go to another person, and then they go and take those ballots, and they look at them, and then they verify them. This eliminates a lot of those steps and condenses it down to basically five steps into two steps, and reduces our amount of time of handling those items. The devices are made to order, so we have to have it built as, you don't have them pre-made, they build them as, when they need them. So it takes a little bit of time. In order to get in time for the November, we are not able to get in time for the May election. But they have to build it, order it, bring it in, set it up, and train us on how to use it. So it takes some time, that's why we're trying to get it done right now. But we'll be using funds from our archiving fund that the records has, that we set aside special fees that we get from recording documents on that. The total price is fifty-five, fifty-eight thousand dollars for the item.
How much time do you anticipate it saving?
Well-
Normal election.
Part of my problem is that we've been leading up to this, is it's harder for me to find dependable people that are willing to volunteer their time and work, our board workers, to bring them in. And it's getting harder and harder to find them, and now my biggest problem is those workers usually are in the at-risk demographic. And so now I don't really have that pool to pull from. So I have to do more and more with just a few people I have in my office. And then that's, that's kind of the bigger portion what it's saving me is on there. But it, it's gonna pick things up 10, 20% of, of time, I would assume, on that. But the big problem is, is the election night, everybody wants to vote on Tuesday. We're vote by mail, we've been pretty much COVID-friendly for 20, over 20 years. But still, people wanna drop them off on February, or not February, on Tuesday, when the hype is. And we get, we'll get 30, 40% of our ballots in on Tuesday. And trying to get those done, and people calling in and wondering why they don't have the results, well, that's because everybody dropped them off that last, that last day, and we have to go through certain orders, and we have to verify everybody's signature in order to do this, which takes time. We want to make sure that those people are legitimately voting, that can vote. Any other questions, Commissioners?
I move for the adoption of BCC 2020-030.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you Commissioners.
Carries, thank you, and then we have air conditioning.
Yes, we have a payable for repairs on the air conditioning, or basically heat pumps up at the juvenile building up there. So just, it's part of the, it's over 5,000 dollars, so it needs approval for the repair. And if we don't have, cause it's a, it says air conditioning, but actually they're heat pumps, so it also is part of the heating and cooling, so it, it does both.
Mr. Chair, move approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you Commissioners.
I'd move for anything that stops the banging.
Wrong building, that's juvenile.
When courts get back in session, the banging will stop.
Dispatch Recorder Project, not sure which captain's speaking.
The Masked Ombré here. Thank you for protecting us.
I know, and I'm protecting myself, too, not from you, but stay outside. My name's Kathy Llewellyn, I'm the 911 manager for the Yumitilla County Dispatch Center. Back in March, I came before you to request approval for a recording system, which you did approve at eighty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and some cents. Since we have done some visiting between the radio data district and the tech people on the even tide side of the circle, what we had in the proposal will not work for our connection back to Morro County. And since it's a Morro County, Yumitilla County project, we had to have a change order. So I'm, the cost to Yumitilla County will be nine thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-six cents. And that's just an increase in project management cost and a server and some software to go on the server to make the connection. So it was, I wouldn't say oversight, it's just after they got visiting and thought, oh, what we had asked for wasn't gonna work on that side of the project. So I'm asking for approval to spend nine thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-six cents more on that, and to take it out of the contingency for the reserve fund.
Kathy, going back to the original eighty-four thousand, that's now moving up to a hundred and three thousand.
Right.
Has there been communication, you know, I don't know how many people are aware that we have a number of partners who, who contribute into this fund?
Right.
And has there been communication with those partners, are they aware of this and what's going on?
They're aware of the recorder project. We, it's through the radio data district that we have the conversations, but the counties are responsible for buying it. So it will, the, the, we have to have a recorder, it's a requirement of the law. And so with, with our budget, it doesn't come out of what the other counties pay for, but the amount that we transfer into the reserve fund does. So I haven't had really any communication as to say we're changing the recorder, no, but it's on the record with the radio data district, so.
The reserve fund's adequate enough to cover?
Yeah, it should, yes.
The whole thing? Okay.
Or half, so, cause we're splinting the costs with Morro County, too.
But the reserve fund is, is the reserve fund that also includes the cities and the-
That's what we transfer over into there, and it builds.
I know you're just asking for nine thousand for our part.
Right.
Just wanted to make sure that, sometimes we hear from them that, that they had no input into it, that they weren't aware, and all that. And I just want to make sure there had been communication back to them. Mr. Chair, I'd move approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you very much.
I respect your personal safety decision.
Yeah, cause I had a, I had the contract here.
Before you step down, has there been a replacement for you yet? Has I, did I see something on social media, perhaps?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Karen Permers, she'll be my replacement. You can pull your mask down so they can see you. I'm smiling, too.
Congratulations, Karen.
Yeah, so she's, has 30-plus years in dispatch service, and we've been, she's been kind of shadowing me, and I've been trying to teach her things, I've got a lot more to do, I've got a long list of things. So it's nice to have her start early so I can have the two months to-
For sure.
Already, yep.
She's kind of been tonto to your Lone Ranger for a long time, right?
Right, uh-huh, she has. She has, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Having worked with both of those, too, that was a very good choice, so.
I agree.
Okay. Emergency declaration, item number 11.
As the board probably recalls, you declared a state of emergency within Yumitilla County on March 18th due to the COVID outbreak. And that was for a period of 60 days, which will be expiring May 17th. And the proposal is to extend it for another 60 days to July 6th.
Kind of matches up with the governor's.
Uh, yes.
Open plan?
It won't be quite, but yes, it, she extended hers 60 days, you're doing the same, so you have a little bit longer period than the, the state, but-
Okay.
It's pretty much the same.
Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, move approval or adoption of order BCC 2020-031.
I'm reluctant to second it because we have already passed a resolution indicating we would not enact anything that goes beyond the governor's guidelines or declarations.
I thought hers said the 6th.
It does say, this is through-
So this is the same, or not?
This, no, this will be through July 16th.
Oh, 16th, oh, I think it said July 6th.
I'm sorry, I did, that was hers. It's 60 days from May 17th, so it would be July 16th.
What, can we amend that to go to July 6th?
Yes, you can.
Can we make a friendly amendment to your motion?
I would, I would, can I amend my own, I, I will.
There you go, that works even better.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made to extend it to July 6th and seconded, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thank you for catching that. Item 12, West Yumitilla Mosquito Control District Board Appointment.
There is a vacancy on the board to the death of one of the members, and the proposal is to appoint Jason Luke for, to fill the remainder of the vacant, the term for that vacancy.
So move.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Okay, item number 13, supplemental budgets, and we're going back into public hearing mode.
Been waiting for.
Been waiting for this, and we got lucky, it's Marie again.
Good morning, Marie Simonas, Assistant Director-
You can adjust that microphone if you need to.
My kindergarten desk. Marie Simonas, Assistant Director of Budget and Finance. I'm before you today to present seven supplemental budgets and six budget transfers that are scheduled for consideration today. I'm just going to read them, and if you have any questions at the end, we'll address them all. First one, Budget Order 2020-45, General Fund Records and Archives. The Records and Archives Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of $65,000, an increase in materials and services of $12,000, and an increase in a contingency of $53,000. Budget Order 2020-48, Corrections Assessment. The Corrections Assessment Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue of $24,000 and an increase in transfers out of $24,000. Budget Order 2020-50, Human Services Fund, Mental Health Administration. Mental Health Administration Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenue of $55,000 and an increase in materials and services of $55,000. Budget Order 2020-51, Community Justice, Community Corrections. The Community Corrections Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning, beginning cash of $524,000, an increase in local revenue of $2,500, an increase in state revenue of $4,719, a decrease in materials and services of $259,787, and an increase in contingency of $790,006. Budget Order 2020-52, Community Justice Drug Court. The Drug Court Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a decrease in beginning cash of $8810, a decrease in local revenue of $86,078, and a decrease in materials and services of $94,888. Budget Order 2020-53, Community Justice Transitional Housing. The Transitional Housing Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $2,087, an increase in local revenue of $1,065, and an increase in materials and services of $3,152. Budget Order 2020-54, Community Justice Justice Reinvestment. The Justice Reinvestment Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in beginning cash of $773, a decrease in local revenue of $164,657, an increase in state revenue of $172,248, an increase in materials and services of $18,163, and a decrease in contingency of $9,839. Appropriations Transfers. Budget Order 2020-43, General Fund Jail. The Jail Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $119,010 and a decrease in contingency of $119,010. Budget Order 2020-44, General Fund Victim, Victim Witness Program. The Victim Witness Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $7,000 and a decrease in contingency of $7,000. Budget Order 2020-46, General Fund Land Use Planning Program. The Land Use Planning Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $35,000 and a decrease in contingency of $35,000. Budget Order 2020-47, General Fund Surveyor. The Surveyor Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $3,000, an increase in capital outlay of $5,000, and a decrease in contingency of $8,000. Budget Order 2020-49, Law Library. The Law Library Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $15,000 and a decrease in contingency of $15,000. Budget Order 2020-55, GIS, Communication Equipment Reserve. The Communication Equipment Reserve Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $3,000 and a decrease in contingency of $3,000. That concludes my program.
Okay, I'm gonna unmute the microphone, say, ask if anybody has any, from the public, has any comments on that? Yeah, we're gonna mute the one. Okay. Hearing any Commissioner comments or questions?
I believe we're in hearing mode on the-
Yes.
Supplemental budgets, is that not correct?
That is correct.
Where we did have the appropriation transfers also enumerated, which comes in the next motion, so, okay?
Okay, hearing no questions from Commissioners, let's go out of public hearing mode and go to budget transfers.
Mr. Chair, move approval of Budget Order 2020-45.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Move approval of Budget Order 2020-48.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Move approval of Budget Order 2020-50.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Move approval of Budget Order 2020-51.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Move approval of Budget Order 2020-52.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye. Move approval of Budget Order 2020-53.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Move approval of Budget Order 2020-54.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? That concludes it, huh, that's it?
We have budget transfers yet, that's all.
Alrighty, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, Commissioner reports, Commissioner Alfred.
Well, we haven't, we haven't done the appropriation transfers yet. We still need to do those, we did, we did the supplemental budgets.
Okay, so, okay, you're right, so budget transfers.
I move approval of Budget Order 2020-43.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Move approval of Budget Order 2020-44.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Move approval of Budget Order 2020-46.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye. Move approval of Budget Order 2020-47.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye. Move approval of Budget Order 2020-49.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye. Move approval of Budget Order 2020-55.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Hey, that is it now. Okay, Commissioner reports, Commissioner Alfred.
Ah, I really have nothing to, nothing to report, we didn't- Ah, I really have nothing to, nothing to report that we didn't cover in staff last Monday.
All right. Nothing for Commissioner Murdoch, okay.
Really?
Well, you don't have to think of something, my guys have been reporting every day.
Okay, and I also have nothing to report, and on that note, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
If you want to see eloquence, go to the EO website.